Good evening and welcome to the regular board meeting. It is Wednesday, December 19th, Cordova Recreation and Park District. Please continue.
Thank you Chair Reyes. To lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening, I'd like to welcome Shawn Twilla from Golden State Water Company to the podium, please.
Thank you, please join me. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'd like to do a little bit more of an introduction to Mr. Twilla. He is the Superintendent of the Water District for Golden State, and he's a great community partner. He's recognized this evening not only as a good partner, but also a recent donation made to our Hideout program of $300. So we wanted to bring Shawn here this evening and thank him for that and Golden State for the partnership. And then also, we look forward to working with you more in 2019. If you wanted to say a little bit more about maybe why the Hideout was selected from Golden State, that would be great.
Certainly, and thank you all for having me here. It's my pleasure. As a representative from Golden State Water Company, it's incredibly important to us to invest in our community. The Park District has a number of tremendous programs. One of them, as you indicated, is the Hideout at Haggen Park. Our organization, Golden State Water Company, looks for three main pillars when giving back to our communities. The Hideout is a program that highlights two of the three. One is activity for children, education is another one, third is anything related to watershed. The Hideout as a program is a fantastic endeavor for both the activity component and the education component, and it's our pleasure to partner with you all to ensure that those children that are attending the Hideout are able to do so year after year. So thank you for the opportunity, we appreciate it, and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, thank you. All right, so we will move on to the roll call.
Director Lineback?
Here.
Director Sloan?
Present.
Secretary Danzel?
Here.
Vice Chair Yearwood?
Here.
And Chair Reyes?
Here. Thank you. So now we are going to ask our board if any of you have any board disclosures on any of the action items that we have tonight. Seeing none, we are going to move on to comments by the public.
Thank you Chair Reyes. Members of the public may address the board on district topics not listed on this agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. It is a violation of state law for the board to discuss or take action on non-agenda items. Board members may only briefly ask clarifying questions or refer the matter to staff. And I do have one speaker card.
Wonderful.
It's from a friend of ours, an elf from the North Pole.
Oh, all right. Hello, Mr. Don.
Good evening, good evening.
Good evening.
Merry Christmas, happy holidays. Oh, oh, how rude of me, hold on. There we go.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, yeah, I had to doppelganger your tech elf, your tech guy and replace him. We don't do human ears very well, though. Anyway, just wanted to say how much we enjoyed your tree lighting ceremony. I've done three with Santa down here in this area, and we had a good time, with loads of fun. We had more fun yours than at any other ones we did. So, good job. It's Elf approved, it's Santa approved. Heck, we're thinking of having a North Pole convention next year.
That sounds great.
So you may be inundated with hundreds of elves if you're not careful, anyway. So, had a really good time, keep it up, everybody had fun. We did lose Blitzen, but we did find him.
That's wonderful.
Everybody got back to North Pole. It was a load of fun, it was great. So applause to you guys and all the people who helped put that on.
Thank you very much, Don.
Merry Christmas, happy holidays.
Merry Christmas.
Oh, make sure there's still time to get your name on the good list, but be careful, you could still make the naughty list. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Merry Christmas. Thank you, Don. Well, listen, staff, wonderful, wonderful, great to hear, and now we know we have an elf. We can call on next year. All right, that is wonderful, that was so nice of him, thank you. So we are going to move on to item C, which is the November 6th general election.
Yes, thank you Chair Reyes. Item C1 is to adopt Resolution 18/19-26, certifying the election results. And as you can see, we have received the information from Sacramento County with the resolution there for your consideration.
Wonderful. So, do we need to do a board action to approve it? All right, so I will entertain a motion to adopt resolution.
I move the Board of Directors to adopt Resolution 18/19-26, certifying election results, Board of Directors.
Moved by Chair, Vice Chair Yearwood, seconded by Director Sloan. All those in favor?
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Director Sloan? Secretary Danzel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
And Chair Reyes?
Aye. So now we go to move to item C2, which is...
Yes, this is a very exciting part of our meeting this evening. We would like to administer the oath of office, so if I could have our newly re-elected directors join me down by the podium. We're going to do a group oath of office, and then they are going to sign their oaths, and then Administrator Larkin will give them their certificate of election.
Thank you.
That's cool, my chance for it.
All right, let's go.
Oh, hey.
They're all being, they're all being re-elected.
My name.
Do you want to move?
Okay. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, and state your name one at a time.
Brian Danzel.
Chair Arlenbach.
Inez El Reyes.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge?
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which?
The duties upon which?
I am about to enter.
I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now if you'd please come sign each of your oaths, and then I'll follow your signatures. And then Administrator Larkin will give their certificates of election and take a photograph.
If you want to be that light right there, it would be fantastic.
Right here?
Yeah, like up here, yeah.
Here.
It would be fantastic.
Okay. Welcome, congratulations. Welcome to the board again. Mr. Terry. I guess welcome back to the board.
Yes. We're welcome. Free brandy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was...
Oh, you saw all my shots.
Talk about a good job.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You. Thank you.
And then, we're retiring for a cake, is that what we're doing?
Yes, so I will go ahead and ask us all, and ask you all to join us for a scheduled 15-minute recess, so that we can shake your hands, and we can thank you, and we can celebrate with you in the community boardroom.
And if you want to do photo ops, feel free to use our space up here, and we'll do that.
Yes, for families that are here. Totally.
Yeah, I couldn't do it.
Are the lights hot enough for you?
What is it, I mean, I just... You have it right there, don't you? I'm ready for bamboo shoots to come out, and somebody started interrogating me. Get the water, boy. Get the water. Yeah, they say only the lights are... Oh, these... Or solar eclipse, winter eclipse. I'm surprised my glass...
We'll just have photoshopped. Take care, she...
I was in one of them.
I had to get one.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sure I'm even...
Okay, so, we should be continuing in a few minutes, let me just get Ms. Terry. All right, so we do have item D.
Thank you Chair Reyes. Item D is the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered administratively routine and will be acted upon in one motion unless separate action on a specific item is necessary. The chairperson will consider any requests for discussion on the items prior to approval of the consent calendar. This evening we have four items for your consideration. Item D1 is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Directors on November 14th, 2018. Item D2 is the district financial report for October 2018. Item D3 is to adopt Resolution 18/19-27, accepting the notice of completion for the Mater Sports Center interior gym painting improvements. And item D4 is to adopt Resolution 18/19-28, accepting the notice of completion for the Mater Sports Center exterior gym painting improvements.
Thank you. So we have a consent calendar. I would like to ask the board if any of you would like to pull an item from the consent calendar for further discussion, okay, or questions, okay? Staff, do we have any items we need to pull? Okay, well then, if that's the case, then I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I move that the Board of Directors approve consent calendar items D1 through D4.
Moved by Director Lineback?
Second.
Seconded by Secretary Danzel. All those in favor?
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Secretary Danzel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
And Chair Reyes?
Aye. All right, so here we are, and we are going to be going through a public hearing, and there are special proceedings here, so clerk?
Yes, we will move into the public hearing for CFD 2018-01, Park Facilities and Services, protest and continuation. This is for item E1. So we will begin the public hearing.
Yes, so this is the time and place for the public hearing for Community Facilities District Number 2018-01 and Future Annexation Area. The hearing is to inquire into the formation of the district and the future annexation area, the services and facilities to be provided, and the levy of special taxes in the district. Before I formally open the hearings, are there any property owners or registered voters in the district or the future annexation area who wish to file written protests? If so, they must be filed with the clerk of the board now. Seeing none, the time is 7:06. The hearing is now open. We will first have presentations by staff about the district. After that, we will receive comments and questions, and any oral protests from any interested persons. When all comments have been received, the hearing will be closed.
Thank you, we'll turn it over to Finance Manager Matt Goodell.
Good evening.
Good evening, Matt.
Thank you Clerk Jones and Chair Reyes, board members. So tonight, I'm not going to steal this thunder, I'm just going to introduce them now. We have Mr. Brian Brown here, our tax engineer with Franciscan Associates. He's traveled quite a distance, so I'm going to let him do a mini presentation about this. We have the resolution of intention in that last meeting, and so we're going to talk about the formation process at this meeting, so welcome Brian.
Welcome. Thank you. So this evening, we have a few words for you to kind of provide some background on the development, on the CFD itself, that's before you this evening. So the two developments are Douglas 98 and Grantline 208, and they're proposed to collectively construct 1,030 single-family detached units. Each of these developments are conditioned to mitigate the fiscal impacts of their projects, and the CFD provides the funding mechanism for them to do so. The boundaries of the CFD are coterminous with these two developments, and there will be a future annexation area as well. The maximum annual rate per single-family home is $403, and that rate can escalate annually based upon the greater of CPI or 3%. Forgive me, CPI is the consumer price index for the area, and the tax may be levied in perpetuity to pay for services as long as the district is continuing to provide the authorized services. At build-out, the CFD and these developments are estimated to generate approximately $415,000 in fiscal year 1819, meaning that amount would escalate annually based upon CPI or 3%. With that said, the formation process consists of three legislative actions. The first action to form the CFD occurred on November 14th, 2018, when the board adopted the resolution of intention, and it started the formation process. Tonight's going to be the second legislative action, if you will, and there's multiple actions this evening, to form the CFD. This evening, the board will hold the public hearing, consider approval of the resolutions of formation and calling for the special election, will canvass the ballots, and then confirm and declare the results. Assuming approval by the electorate, the board will perform the first of the two readings of the ordinance, which orders the annual levying of the special taxes. The third legislative action will occur on January 16th, 2019, and that's where the second reading of the ordinance will occur. That concludes our presentation for this evening, but district staff and myself are here to answer any questions you guys may have about the process.
Thank you. So, do we have any comments or process, or questions or protests out there? Any questions or protests from the audience? So, at this time, it is 10 after 7, and the hearing is closed. We may now consider and adopt the resolution of the Board of Directors of the Cordova Recreation and Park District of Formation of Community Facilities District and Future Annexation Area, which will establish the district and the future annexation area and the resolution of the Board of Directors of the Cordova Recreation and Park District, calling special landowner elections for Community Facilities District, which will call for the vote of registered voters in the district to approve the special tax and appropriations limit for the district. Clerk?
Thank you, we will move into item E2, which is to adopt Resolution 18/19-29, Resolution of the Board of Directors of the Cordova Recreation and Park District of Formation of Community Facilities District Number 2018-01, Park Facilities and Services. On this item, I do need to note, we have an amendment on the resolution, page 54 in your board package, we had to correct the language to reflect the Board of Directors instead of the city council. So when you make a motion for approval, it would be as amended.
As amended, okay. So with that, we have, I would like to entertain a motion to approve item E2, as amended. Do I have a motion?
I will move that the Board of Directors adopt Resolution 18/19-29, Resolution of the Board of Directors of the Cordova Recreation and Park District of Formation of Community Facilities District Number 2018-01, Park Facilities and Services as amended.
Moved by Director Lineback?
I'll second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Yearwood. All those in favor?
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Secretary Danzel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
And Chair Reyes?
Aye. All right.
Thank you, now we'll move on to item E3, which is to adopt Resolution 18/19-30, Resolution of the Board of Directors of the Cordova Recreation and Park District, calling special landowner election for Community Facilities District Number 2018-01, Park Facilities and Services.
So unless there are any questions, then I would entertain a motion for item E3.
I'll move, I move the Board of Directors to adopt Resolution 18/19-30, Resolution of the Board of Directors of the Cordova Recreation Park District, calling special landowners' election for Community Facility District Number 2018-01, Park Facilities and Services.
Moved by Vice Chair Yearwood?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Director Sloan. Roll call vote.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Secretary Danzel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
And Chair Reyes?
Aye, thank you. Motion carried.
Thank you. I will now conduct the ballot vote by opening the ballots.
Do we know how many ballots?
There are two ballots this evening.
Two ballots?
2,000, no, I'm just kidding, two.
Two.
The first ballot is from Woodside 05N LP. The response is yes.
Yes. Now that's only 50%.
The second ballot is from Lennar Homes of California Incorporated.
Matt is like...
The response on the ballot is yes.
Yay, all right, so we have 100% vote here. So how would we like to, so at this point, do we move on to...
Yes, we'll move on to item E4.
E4.
Which is to adopt Resolution 18/19-31, Resolution of the Board of Directors of the Cordova Recreation and Park District, declaring results of special landowner election, and directing, recording of notice of special tax lien within Community Facilities District Number 2018-01, Park Facilities and Services.
Yes. So obviously, it was a more than two-thirds vote here of approval. So at this point, I would like to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move that we, the Board of Directors, adopt Resolution 18/19-31, Resolution of the Board of Directors of the Cordova Recreation and Park District, declaring results of the special landowner election, and directing recording of notice of special tax lien within Community Facilities District Number 2018-01, Park Facilities and Services.
Moved by Director Sloan, and seconded by Director Dan, oh, by Secretary Danzel. Roll call vote.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Secretary Danzel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
And Chair Reyes?
Aye. Motion carried.
The next item is regarding the ordinance, and this is item E5. So first, I will introduce the ordinance by reading the title. Ordinance 18/19-01, Ordinance of the Board of Directors of the Cordova Recreation and Park District, Levying Special Tax Within Community Facilities District Number 2018-01, Park Facilities and Services. So we are looking for a motion to waive the... So we are looking for a motion to waive the full first reading, if the Board desires.
So, at this point, board members, I would entertain a motion to move for the waiving of the full first reading.
I move the Board of Directors waive the first, the full first reading of Ordinance 18/19-01, Ordinance of the Board of Directors of the Cordova Recreation and Park District Leveing Special Tax Within Community Facilities District Number 2018-01, Park Facilities and Services.
Moved by Director Lineback, seconded by?
I'll second that.
Vice Chair Yearwood. Roll call.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Secretary Danzel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
And Chair Reyes?
Aye.
So motion carried, and so we are done with the first reading. Thank you very much, very much.
Thank you.
All right, so...
I'd like to just quickly thank Brian Brown from Francisco Associates and Joe Francisco, and also Scott Ferguson with Jones Hall, our legal counsel, that really helped and assisted us through this whole entire process and document creation and getting us through this process. So I just wanted to do a shout out to them. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Very good. Thank you. So, what we're going to do now is we are going to move towards Item F.
Thank you, Chair Reyes. Item F1 is a presentation by the Park Services Department on the Old McDonald's Farm property. This is an informative presentation only, no action to be taken by the Board of Directors at this time. And I'll turn it over to Park Services Superintendent Jerry Dobbs.
Hello, Jerry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm waiting for my projectionist here. Matt?
Well, you can sing us a song while we're waiting.
Oh, well, I could do that.
Here we go. All right.
Okay, the, this is just a more or less an informative presentation to keep you guys up to date with what we're doing out at the Cordova Golf Course. We have a section of land out there that's about five acres in size. This is the old sign, the Old McDonald Farm Restaurant sign. You all may remember this a few years back, where the Historical Society now has it. It's in the process of trying to restore it. So, I was surprised how long it's been closed. It's been more than 30 years. Closer to 40 years now that it's been closed. So, there's about five acres of land back there that has been used more or less as a dumping site for old equipment, as well as, we used it to go ahead and spread some of the toolies from the one pond area to restore the pond area there toward the front of the golf course. And so we were looking at this site here for potential restoration and usage in the future for potential projects or for rentals or whatever. It's a piece of land that we have since have started cleaning up and trying to go ahead and get it ready for whatever the future may hold for it. So what I have for you right now, we'll go to the next slide, is the current condition of the Old McDonald Farm Restaurant. Some of y'all may have memories of what it used to look like. This is what it looks like at this time. This is actually the good side. It is starting to run down badly, deteriorate to the point where it is starting to collapse. This is actually facing the parking lot of the restaurant itself. Next slide. Okay, this is toward the other side of the restaurant. It has definitely collapsed. Definitely a hazardous sort of situation for anybody that happens to wander back there in the back. We've had quite a few transits that would try to shack up in the area, and they have since have moved on. We've actually boarded up the old residence to try to prevent any type of using that as a shelter at this point. So, next slide, please. Okay, this is the site that's where the kitchen is actually located. You can see the flue is in that area. Again, it's a very bad shade. The walls are pretty much close to collapsing at this time. Next slide. This, again, you're looking into the dining room area. I don't know if you remember what it used to look like, but this is definitely not what you would remember at this point. Next slide. Again, this is part of the dining area, some of the seating. We still have some of the old chairs there. I would not sit on them at this time. They're pretty well dry rotted at this point. It's been scavenged pretty heavily. Upstairs in Patrick's office, we do have... You got him here? Okay. We collected the best plates. We actually found a menu. That was a very special deal. You can get a chicken dinner. I think it was what, a dollar sixty for the dinner? Okay, next slide, please. Again, this is, this is the kitchen. You see the stove. That's one of the stoves that was left behind and one of the counters where the people often would go ahead and prepare the food upon. Next slide. A little bit more closer shot of the, of the structure itself. Okay. Now, the house, this was residence of the previous owners of the restaurant itself. It is badly deteriorated. We went ahead and boarded up the windows and the doorways. The peacocks were going inside. We have 25 peacocks out there at this time. They do their business inside the residence, but I was more concerned. Previous administrator asked me to investigate the building, see if it could be salvageable and restored to original condition. It can be if you go ahead and level it to the ground. The foundation is probably the soundest structure, which would be your basement area. The floor is about ready to collapse into the basement. Next slide, please. This is the front door entrance. You can see it's definitely overgrown. The site is actually fed with well water. Also, there is a transformer in the back, actually a good junction point for power for the entire site. So this is where, we looked at it as a potential site for some sort of usage in the future. At this time, I'm not sure how it can be used. We leave that up to the planners at this point, and for those who have some thoughts about it. Our job right now is to try to get it ready for whatever use is coming. Next slide, please. This is, again, the one side there. You can see where we had to board it up. This is actually where we see a lot of people who left, and this is how they entered in, into the building itself. The roof is just about ready to collapse as well. Next slide, please. There was a garage. It was an old standard garage. The door itself, you can see, it's just, it's collapsed. Inside was an old golf cart, as well as the one that was used in the Fourth of July parades. That sense has gone by the wayside. But this whole, the whole site right here, we are looking at leveling up to, go to the next slide there, Matt. This is the map of the whole area. You see what's in circles. The largest circle at the top is the restaurant itself. The bottom left is the residence, and the garage is a smaller circle. But there's actually a structure over to the far right next to the golf course itself. It's pretty much collapsed, and just above the restaurant, there's another structure that's collapsed. And you see the large parking lot area. We are, we are just about finished getting that area cleaned up. It was loaded down with all sorts of equipment. It was out of sight, out of mind for the district to be able to store old equipment out there, particularly from the golf course. We worked it out with, to get it cleaned up, no cost to the district. People were able to salvage it. We could not find any records, ownership records for the items. It was, been there that long. We just had no clue. Any purchase records or whatever, so. So basically, what we did, we went ahead and worked it out where salvage companies come in and it's taking the material on their own dime, taking it out of there so it'd be ready for us to go ahead and grade and level the buildings at a future date. What we're looking at is proposing that we level the buildings next fiscal year and get the site ready, and meantime, it allows our planning team to work with administrative staff to decide the best use for the site. We are looking for homes for peacocks. Yes.
Okay, so there are 20 peacocks to be adopted, right?
We found out they're not protected, but we would prefer to find, find homes for them. Now, if I was back in Kentucky, I know what some of my friends would have done. They're mighty tasty, too. Okay.
Well, hey, peacocks.
But we're definitely trying to find homes for them.
Yeah.
You got peacocks and peahens out there.
And you know, all I know is that the peacocks tend to be, they just keep coming back to the same place. So if they, so that's, that's kind of challenging. Maybe they can be relocated?
Well, I think also what's happening, they're also drawing in quite a few of the turkey. And turkey is starting to come in that area as well.
So then they might make peaturk.
A new breed. So there's a whole box of those mugs and plates and all those. I'm not sure if you all want a Christmas gift or not from that old time. But if not, we're going to donate them to the Historical Society if they're interested in taking them. However, there's several in this box, so if you are interested in taking a mug, a plate, or all of which, you are welcome to do so.
So it, I think it would be nice to send it to the Historical Committee. I don't know, have any, so have any of you had an opportunity to eat at the Old McDonald's restaurant when you were a kid? Okay. Interesting. So you might want to check out maybe a mug or a cup, use it as a paperweight?
I have a question. Has the Historical Society been out there and evaluate everything that's there that they don't, they want nothing? Like even that, even if that, that one, that bench seat that's back to back, that could be refurbished if they ever want to put it in a museum or something, is that?
There is no way I would have anyone out there inspecting that building and the condition it's in. It's very unsafe. There's nails that are sticking out of the floorboards.
But you could show them the photographs.
I think maybe just that bench.
I would just say, show somebody the photographs?
We are doing this presentation this evening with the intent of making sure that the Historical Society is aware of the condition, because I have had discussions with some of those members reliving the days of when they went, and they weren't aware of the current condition. So this tool that Jerry is presenting this evening will absolutely be given to the Historical Society to see the current state of the building. If they're interested, sure, but I'm not so sure it's safe for us to give out that kind of equipment other than this, which is safe. Other pieces that are still remaining are weathered. The roof is down. And I would not feel very comfortable about it.
The wooden chairs, I mean, that's how dangerous.
We can, we can ask them, but I'm not going to have people walk the property due to the safety concerns.
I didn't say to have them walk it, but I just want to know if there's anything there they might want to have. I mean, there's a possibility. And also, is it, there's a basement. Is there, basement's empty completely?
I dare not to go down in the basement because of the floor itself. Also, please be aware that the buildings were built on probably about 50, 60 years ago. We probably have a danger also of asbestos and also lead-based paint and so forth. A lot of dust in that area that could be contaminated. We would work with a vendor that would be specially licensed to go ahead and get rid of, it would be hazardous debris.
So, yeah, so I think probably it'll be good for them to receive this here. And it would be, we have time. I mean, time is not, in other words, it's time-sensitive. It's not a matter of holding it until people can make decisions or not. Yes, and if they'd like, we should have had a picture of the peacock, because then... But those are historical.
So you found the nests? There's actually peacock nests in there?
To give you an idea, it smells so badly inside. I know they were nesting down in the basement and also up in the rafters. We went ahead and boarded it up to not only prevent the peacocks from going in, but also from people going inside the buildings and getting hurt. It's our property. We didn't want to have that as a liability issue. The building is definitely, all the buildings are hazardous at this point.
And obviously, it's not fenced in, right? It's not. So we have to be very, very, very careful about that. You are correct. Because it is, it is totally, okay. So any other questions for Mr. Dobbs? All right, thank you very much, Jerry. Thank you. All right, so we can move on to Item G.
Committee reports, we have none this meeting.
Okay, so we will move on to regular calendar.
Thank you, Chair Reyes. Item H1 is to authorize the District Administrator to execute a construction services agreement with TJR Resources Incorporated in the amount of $189,922.07 for the construction of the Riviera East Park Walkway Replacement Project. And I'll turn it over to Planner Christina James.
Good evening, members of the Board. Chair Reyes. At your October meeting, the Board of Directors authorized the District Administrator to invite bids for the construction of the Riviera East Walkway Replacement Project. This project includes the replacement of all the asphalt walkways throughout that park with concrete walkways. During this meeting, there was some discussion of whether or not the, a trail piece to the south belonged to the district. That discussion was followed up with an email from my supervisor that, yes, in fact, that piece is part. It was, a topography map was attached to that email to show that that is also included in the project. Bids were opened on November 29th. Five bids were received. The low bidder is TJR Resources. This is actually the same contractor that did Lincoln Village for us. So we were satisfied with their work during that project. A budget of $185,164 from Measure J Funds were allocated for this project. The total project budget must be revised to $213,000 to accommodate the low bid of $189,922.07. That's the construction contract, and also the 213 budget would include the soft costs, such as permitting, which is through the County of Sacramento. The survey, 5% construction contingency. And if the Board approves tonight, we will begin the process with, of executing a contract with this contractor. We would anticipate having a pre-construction meeting sometime within the first two weeks of January and authorize a notice to proceed from there. And then the project itself, it's the winter season, so weather depending, we could see the project completing within two to three months.
Thank you, Christina. Do we have any questions for Christina? All right, well, thank you. So at this point, I will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. I move the Board of Directors authorize the District Administration to execute a construction service agreement with TJR Resources Incorporated in the amount of $189,922.07 for the construction of the Riviera East Park Walkway Replacement Project.
Moved by Director Sloan?
I would like to second that motion.
Seconded by Director Lineback. Roll call vote.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Secretary Danzel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
And Chair Reyes?
Aye.
So motion carried. So now we're going to move on to H2.
Thank you, Chair Reyes. Item H2 is to adopt Resolution 18/19-32, amending the full-time and part-time salary and hourly rate scales as required by California Code of Regulation Section 570. and hourly rate scales as required by California Code of Regulation Section 570.5. And I'll turn it over to Manager White.
Thank you, Board of Directors and Chair Reyes. I'm bringing forth, again, you've seen this several times, a resolution to amend the full-time and part-time salary scale, and we have a few reasons why we need to make the amendment for the upcoming calendar year. First of all, and most importantly, is that the minimum wage has increased from $11 per hour to $12 an hour effective January 1st. And this requires a complete overhaul of the scale to reflect that, so that the lowest-paid positions aren't making the same amount as the next steps here at the district for part-time. We also are adding a position called Sports Official. Right now, at the district, we contract that service out, and we believe that there will be a cost savings if we hire that position and manage it from within. We can pay a lower hourly rate if we do that internally. And third, at the last meeting, the board voted to amend the District Administrator's salary, and that needs to be reflected in the salary scale to be compliant with the CCR 570.5. So those three items have been reflected. There is a fiscal impact. Right now, with the, the lower amount of part-time employees at the district in the wintertime, it's about a 5% increase, but we believe it could be upwards of a 9% increase in wages for part-time, for all the part-time employees. And that has been considered and included in the fiscal budget. With that, we'd like to request that this is amended.
Any questions? Secretary Danzel has a question.
This sports official, explain it a little better to me. I'd like to know what this person's job actually is, other than?
Sure, I'm going to have Jill explain, since she's going to help me prepare the job description. So with the addition of youth sports, for us to go out to assigners and have them assign the officials for those games, very expensive. So what we want to do is bring in our own in-house sports officials and pay them to officiate, say, the youth flag football game. So they're just in-house sports officials. This is not for the adult softball program at this point. It would basically be for youth sports. It doesn't mean it can't be for adult sports in the future, but it's just for the youth.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I wanted to check, because I know that there's, after my 20 seasons of coaching high school sports, you know, you get the same referees or same officials doing every single game. They start to know the players. They start picking, picking players that they know that are going to do things and start making calls prior to things happening. So I was wanting to make sure, especially with the adult league, that that wasn't going to be the case for now, at least.
Yeah, right now, the adult softball, we would stay with the assigner. They do an excellent job. But with the youth sports, especially with that flag football league, we actually need officials that, that are out there every Saturday to help the kids develop, because those league rules are pretty, pretty wonky for the youth flag football. And this year, we had different officials every Saturday. So Michael McPherson had to be out there every Saturday helping those officials, and it just, it just wasn't a good setup for us. So we'd like to bring them in-house and be able to train them ourselves.
Okay. All right, thank you.
That's great. Any other questions? Director Lineback?
Yeah, and it's closer to a comment than a question, really. And it's regarding the fact that, just to put it out there, that full-time salaries are not being affected by this change. And so as part-time minimum wage increases year after year, and fairly significantly, that we need to be mindful that we may be getting to the position where we're paying our lower level, especially full-time salaried employees, at a rate, you know, equivalent or maybe even less than a part-time hourly rate. So we kind of have to keep in mind that this change does not affect full-time employees, that we do that at the annual budgeting time. And this year, they got, for instance, a 2% COLA, which was their first COLA in many years. And this represents a 5% to 9% increase in part-time wages. So you can see, you can start to compress, you know, the differences and, and the literal value that you're assigning to part-time versus full-time positions. So we just kind of have to keep in mind that in the future, I think we're going to have to address how this affects our full-time employees. That's my comment, it's not really a question.
No, I appreciate that, because we have that discussion every year at Budget Time, and it, that's not something that we can ignore.
Right.
And it also changes the eligibility for exempt status. To be an exempt employee, you have to make double minimum wage. So every year that affects, could potentially affect someone who we considered exempt and make them non-exempt. So this is something that we have long discussions about, studying other agencies and making some amendments to our scale, and you can expect more, to hear more about that in this budget process.
Very good. Thank you, Terry, for educating us on that, too, you know. All right, so any other questions? Okay, hearing none, then I will entertain a motion.
I move the Board of Directors adopt Resolution 18/19-32, amending the full-time and part-time salary hourly rate scales as required by California Code of Regulation Section 570.5.
Moved by Secretary Danzel and seconded by Vice Chair Yearwood. Roll call, vote.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Secretary Danzel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
And Chair Reyes?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, so now we will move on to I, the I items.
Thank you, Chair Reyes. Item I1 is Board Member Reports. Item I1A, we had no training over this last period. Item I1B is Board Member Community Activities and Meetings Report.
Thank you. All right, so we are now on Board Member Reports. Shall we start with Vice Chair Yearwood? I wanted to, I just want to make sure, yes, Mr.?
Oh, all right, all right. Okay, sure.
You've got a good handful here. This is good.
Well, let's see, on November 25th, I attended the tree lighting event, another well-attended event, and the weather held off, so that was nice. On December 8th, I was stopped by breakfast with Santa. They did a little bit of a different thing this year, where they did two seedings and things like that, to keep, you know, cut down on the line of people standing there for food, and they sold out, so that was good. And then I was able to finally attend one of the employee events on December 11th, the holiday party. It was nice to see, you can definitely tell the crews that work together, because they all sit together, and they were having a really good time, so that was nice to see. And there was prizes and gifts galore, compliments of Jerry there, I believe, is what I've been hearing, so, but it was a nice event.
Yeah.
Fun to attend, I was glad I was able to make it. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Secretary Danzel?
I have no report at this time, ma'am.
Thank you. Director Sloan?
I also went to the tree lighting, I didn't put that down here, but it was a really nice event, except for one thing. They had photographs with Santa right behind the stage, right in the back of the stage. So everybody who was on front of the stage performing, you have people's backs to them. It was kind of, I thought it was awkward. But it was, the weather really was nice. So that was a big plus, that the park looked beautiful, really nice. On the, on November 27th, I attended the Butterfield Riviera East Community Association Steering Committee meeting, and I reported out about the, their walkways and gave them some information that I got from District Administrator Patrick Larkin about the completion, and they were very, very, very happy. So I'm just keeping them abreast and keeping them, you know, well-informed of how that project's coming. On, on December 4th, I attended a workshop for the Rancho Cordova Athletic Association, and basically, on slate for the next allotment of Measure H, or the enhancement, community enhancement funding, will be irrigation at Alstrom Park. They want to work on, I guess that, there seems, I guess, I don't know, there's an issue out there with the irrigation, or, but that was on the agenda. They talked about Heron Landing field use for softball. I think Rod Borba mentioned that because his, his softball complex is not completed yet, that he would be needing to use certain fields and throughout the district, and I think that was one of them that he wants to allocate for his league coming up. They also talked about a, some type of a, a partnership with the CRPD to possibly manage more of some of the facilities that, that they are now, I mean, I guess Rod Borba's facility, maybe they might need help, I don't know, that's an issue. I think we should probably sit down with some of those stakeholders and discuss more of a opportunity for the Park District to get involved with some of their maintenance issues or programming.
Do we have, Administrator Larkin, do we have a staff, or do you attend, attend those meetings? Because I think that's the level, and that'll be really good for them.
Jill always attends those meetings, and she's a great person to be there, and.
So I would.
These are staff-related.
Right. So I would direct any of those questions about, you know, the facilities management or, and partnership and all this irrigation, I would direct them to Jill and have Jill work with.
Well, I'm assuming that Jill has taken those concerns to District Administrator, and I am reporting to my Board of Directors.
Okay, all right. So it is not for us to act on, but for staff?
I wasn't asking for any action.
Okay.
But, you know, a lot of the directors here, some of them used to attend those meetings, and they'd, I think they'd like to know what's going on.
Yeah, it's good to know, totally.
And, let's see, I attended the, on December 11th, the CRPD Employee Recognition Holiday Party, and that was always fun, and thanks to Jerry Dobbs, or, well, actually, maybe it was Santa who delivered a whole bunch of gifts. I'm not sure if it was Santa Dobbs or what, but it was a very, very nice event, and I appreciate the invite. I'm done.
Great. Director Lineback?
Yes, actually, there was a training, too late to be included in this board package, but I did, in fact, take the FPPC Ethics 1, 2, 3, 4 training and passed it on December 17th, and I did send a, my certificate on to the clerk of our board. And then I attended the CRPD Employee Recognition Holiday Party. It was, a good time was had by all, and it's just nice to see everybody interact in a, you know, relaxed environment, and I know that kind of event carries over to people's day-to-day work. So it was great, and thank you to Superintendent Dobbs for all the lovely, I got a paring knife and a little chopping board, and, thank you. And lastly, it's just last night, and I, and I did see Director Sloan there as well, went to the, the Breka Holiday Party, just as they did invite local elected officials. So I did show up with my name tag on and talk to a few people.
Wonderful, thank you. Did you have a question, Director? Okay, all right. Okay, so for myself, over here, I attended, again, the CAR, listen to this, CAPR-CBM. So it's California Association of Park and Recreation Commissioners and Board Members. Have to remember that. It was scheduled, their meetings are predominantly telephone conference, but the last one in October, I, I'm not kidding, it lasted almost six to eight hours on a Saturday. It was their conference call. This one was rescheduled from the 6th of December, and it was rescheduled to the 10th. And one of the biggest parts that, that made it very necessary was that they have a modification to their Executive Board slate of candidates that were, was approved in October. They had to modify it, so their president was a, was Loretta Heron. Their president-elect is Betsy Truax. The vice president is Bill Locke. Treasurer, Ron Roof, and secretary is Dave Benevento, and that's their slate. We will be having our next conference call in January, on the 3rd, it's a Thursday, and they are also going to be planning the March, is it with the CPRS? They normally have something in Sacramento. I think it'll be in Sacramento this year. So I will let you know when that's happening. I will let you know, you know, if we would like to have a presence at the CPRS banquet, they call it the banquet. I believe it's going to be held in, is there a place called Blueprint? Something like this, it's a restaurant. So anyway, all right, that is mine. And then the second item I have here is the CRPD Employee Recognition Holiday Party. It was very, very good. The morale was awesome, the gift-giving and winning and the raffles was just, it was, everyone was just having such a great time. But one of the things that really, really impressed me were the longevity and, and the awards that we were giving for 30 years, 15 years. I mean, that was awesome, and a lot of people were kind of like counting down, so, you know, then 10 and 5, and so that was really nice. And it's really, really nice to see that we have employees that stay with us for a long time. So just wanted to thank you guys, the morale, everybody was just happy and, and good, and it, we've had times when it was a little stressful than it was, so that, that's very good. Thank you for inviting us. I really enjoyed it. Okay, so what we are going to do now is we are going to move into our election of board officers. Before, before I get the clerk to do that, I'd just like to have a very short time to express my gratitude. Last January, we started where staff was asking about top priorities, what did we want to see, how did we want to, the district to grow, and, and I'm pleased to see that they, they heard us. My goals were to start the pool replacement project again, and to make sure that money, monies were secured to bring a community pool back to Hagan Community Park, and we do have that. There was a need to re-establish partnerships to run programs and services in our facility so that we would better serve the residents of our district. We have partners, and we have a lot more connectivity with our stakeholders, and actually, it's nice to see not just the big agencies, public agencies. However, continuing to improve relationships with the city, counties, county, school districts, and civic organizations, and, and the continuing to be, and actually, quite a good step up, financially solvent, really. I, you know, and to get Measure J projects started, you know, and to bring in more diversity and to bring in more programs for adults, seniors, youth, and children. And so I, I really am thrilled. It was a very busy year, and it was our birthday year at that, 60-year birthday. So amidst all that, I really wanted to thank. So amidst all that, I really wanted to thank staff. I want to thank the management team. Your leadership is very, very important, and it makes things happen. I do want to thank my board, their support and willingly hard work to commit to serve is really, I really appreciate that. We had to take on a lot more meetings or workshops because there were new and very imminent opportunities that we were faced with, that staff worked very hard, very hard to make happen. And I'm glad we were able to show them that we were willing to work as hard as they were. I do, I do know to my board members that our reelection, it really showed that we are doing what our constituents want us to do. That's a strong vote of confidence, and I do want us to know that we need to take seriously, as we have, our task. And it, as other people have said to me, this is a good, strong vote of confidence that you guys are doing the right thing. So I do want to say that management and leadership, I want to thank District Administrator Larkin. In your two years here, first year, you kind of were like eating up everything. You needed to know everything, learn everything, understand, and really work the transition. But this last year has really been, I would say, an A job here. I want to thank you. You have changed the environment. You brought in strength-based leadership. You offered challenges, and you have obviously impressed your board. And I'm so glad we have you down for three years, at the least, to begin with. The tide has changed. Our whole, our whole, our whole district, employees from top to bottom, just enjoy being a part of CRPD. And I will tell you, I totally enjoyed being a CRPD director and chairperson for this year. We are sought after. We are welcomed. We are respected. We are here to make things happen, and people know it, and we are always invited to the table. That is a great sign that we are doing what we're supposed to be doing, keeping our eyes on serving. And I really want to, I want to thank you all for that. My year as chair was every month, every day, just exciting. I appreciate it. And I enjoyed it. Of course, we did have some tough times that we had to just hold strong and firm, but it really taught us that if we understood and we knew exactly what we were talking about, that we would be able to stand firm. Thank you. Now, I would like us to move on to our next item.
Thank you so much, Chair Reyes. Item I-2A is to elect board officers for 2019, and it's listed here for the order of motions. We would like to consider it through separate motions and nominations. So we would start with secretary, then go to vice chairperson, and conclude with the chairperson position. The duties of each officer is listed in the staff report. I do want to point out, just as an order of business, that the outgoing chairperson may pass the gavel to the incoming chairperson at the conclusion of the elections. And then the incoming chairperson will run the remainder of this meeting. Then at the January meeting, the seats at the dais will change. So I just wanted to explain how that was going to roll out. I'm available for any questions.
Okay. So we will now open our election process here. So clerk, we will start with the secretary position. So I am now here to open, and I will accept, I would like to entertain a motion to nominate the secretary of the Cordova Reckon Park District Board for the year 2019.
All right. I nominate Director Rick Sloan to serve as secretary of the Board of Directors for a term of one year and until the election of his or her, or his successor. Sorry.
I'll second that. Moved by Vice Chair Yearwood, seconded by Director Lineback. Vote.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Director Sloan? Secretary Danzel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
And Chair Reyes?
Aye. So Director Sloan will be secretary. Wonderful. Congratulations. The next position that we will, I will entertain a motion for a nomination here is the vice chairperson position.
I'd like to make that motion.
Okay.
I'd like to nominate Director Brian Danzel to serve as the vice president of the Board of Directors as a term of one year, for a term of one year and until the election of his or her successor.
So moved by Director Sloan, seconded by?
I'll second that.
Director Yearwood, oh, Vice Chair Yearwood. Vote. These guys.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Yearwood?
Getting confusing, huh?
Chair Reyes?
Aye. Motion carries. Congratulations, Vice Chair Danzel. And now we will go to nominate our chairperson for the Board of Directors for Cordova Reckon Park District 2019.
So I would like to nominate Director Yearwood to serve as the chairperson of the Board of Directors for a term of one year and until the election of his successor.
And I will second that. So moved by Director Lineback and seconded by Chair Inez, for a moment. Vote.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood? Incoming Chair Yearwood?
Well, I guess, even if I vote no, it doesn't matter. Aye.
Outgoing Chair Reyes?
Aye. Congratulations. Our new chairperson is Michael Yearwood. And so I will hand over the gavel. I'm going to put rubber on the end so it doesn't make any noise when he thumbs, no. But, yes. Thank you.
So I guess we're going to move forward to Item J, comments by staff on non-agenda items.
Thank you, Chair Yearwood. Item J-1 is the district's monthly progress report for December, and I'll turn it over to Administrator Larkin.
Great. So some highlights I wanted to go over, more board-related. AB 1, 2, 3, 4 Ethics Training is due for some board members by February 2019. There's a free online two-hour training course that is available through FPPC. As several board members have updated their certificates through conference attendance, Clerk Jones will assist remaining directors in coordinating training opportunities. So Danielle will reach out to you if you are in need of that training, and make sure that you have the access to that particular online training so that you can be updated on that. In human resources, we had our HR staff, Jennifer Wilfong and Andrea White, attend a half-day training for updates on new legislation, case laws affecting employers in 2019. The law with the most impact is SB 1343, which will require that all employees receive anti-sexual harassment training every two years, not just supervisors and board members. The new law requires only one hour of training for non-supervisory employees. So I believe we have that training scheduled coming up in 2019, and we'll let the board know when that required training is going to be held. And also, she is working on a new training calendar for staff so we can make sure that we have good professional development opportunities identified. There's a survey that has gone out to staff to identify what those training needs are, and the responses we've already received. And she is crafting a great calendar for trainings that hit the needs of the employees, which is fantastic. So thank you, Andrea. That's great work. In the Park Services Department, the irrigation has been shut off as of November 18th. We are, in addition, about 80 drinking fountains have been turned off this week to prevent freeze damage to their moving components. Once the temperature remains above freezing, the drinking fountains will be reactivated. So if you notice that drinking fountains were off, it was due to the cold weather, and I'm assuming they're coming back on it. This time, they're back on because the weather's warmed up? Or is it coming back on spring? Okay. So that's good to know. We have some roof repairs that have been done at Methur Sports Center, along with other work that we've done out there, which is improving the facility greatly. As you know, there's the painting project that's been completed, exterior, interior. We had roof repairs to make sure that with the new paint, water didn't come in and ruin it. And we're looking forward to some flooring being replaced and refurbished, working with the Sacramento Kings, along with Kaiser and the County of Sacramento in funding those projects. We also are working with SMUD to replace the lighting, to LED lighting in the Methur Sports Complex, as well as some of our older parks are getting LED lighting changeouts. In recreation, in November, the sports complex lights were subject to major vandalism, like I had noted, causing four weeks' worth of cancellations to all activities, including weekend tournaments, adult softball leagues, and rentals. Customers were disappointed, but they very much understood. The lights are back on now and running, and we're able to resume normal use of play at the complex. We also submitted an insurance claim, and we got reimbursed for some of that loss. So it was at least a silver lining in that. We also, in the senior center activities, Jenny Todd the Great is training on topics including receiving and making calls, checking voicemails, how to log onto Wi-Fi networking, and much more. Afterwards, each participant was given an instruction pamphlet to take home and practice on their own. So they're learning how to use their cell phones, which is a really good thing to know if you are new to cell phones. So Jenny's doing a fantastic job training those folks that are interested in staying in contact with their relatives and things, which is great. Update on the community pool replacement design. The district comments on the design development drawings were sent to the consultant in early November. Planner James and LPA submitted all materials for the City of Rancho Cordova's minor design review and conditional use permits. Approval for this project is going to be on November 20th, which happened. The next major steps for the project include starting construction documents and preliminary specs. Planning staff will identify peripheral projects related to the pool project to be addressed in the upcoming budget process, such as adjusting the existing accessible parking stalls and drop-off area. In addition to that, we're looking at some of those exterior buildings that were going to remain. Ideally, we'd like to demolish those. We had an inspection done, I believe they're asbestos-free, which saves us a ton of money, thank goodness. So we may look to get a grant or find some funding source so that we knock those down prior to the opening, so we don't have that kind of ongoing project after we show them the nice shiny penny. Development projects, Douglas 98 and Grantline 208 and Sunridge Lot J, AKA Chrysler Lot J, are continuing to move forward. Planning staff has also continued to assist the city in reviewing their neighborhood greens projects. This month, planning staff also reviewed and commented on the Methur Sports Community Master Plan, Public Facilities Finance Plan, and Urban Service Plan. We had met with the County of Sacramento on our fees in the new growth capital improvement area. We're waiting to hear back from them on our last negotiation and proposal to them, and we'll see where we go from there. A second community outreach meeting will be held for the Williamson parcel. We are anticipating a community outreach meeting possibly February or March. There's some preliminary work we need to do with the consultant to make sure that all the feedback was received, and that we go back to the residents, and we let them know kind of what we heard and what is the possibility. Originally, we thought there would be a funding source that would have been an easy tap-in, but that funding source actually, at this point, due to the criteria, is not eligible. So we're looking for a different funding source to see if we can get the project going. It's one of those projects that we're excited about because we are expecting to partner with Soilborne, the Tree Foundation, the city, and then, of course, Golden State Water, who was here earlier this evening. In Rosemont, the dugout replacement project is going. The Rosemont Little League has finished demolition of the existing backstop and dugout as part of their contribution to the project. The new dugout and fencing will be installed once a permit from Sacramento County has been secured. And CRPD's construction inspector, John Bianco, continues to monitor the mass grading operations for future park sites in Douglas 98 and landscaped corridors, and trail development by Elliott Homes in the villages of Zimphandell. And with that, that concludes my report.
All right. Well, I guess we'll move on to Item K then.
Thank you, Chair Yearwood. Item K-1 is the Articles Correspondence and Public Outreach, which we have listed there for you.
Apparently, are there any questions? Man, I didn't know I was going to be doing this. All right. So what did you say? Oh, well, how about we go to Item L, Future Agenda Items, Meetings and Events Calendar?
Thank you. Item L-1 is regarding the regular board meeting of January 16th, 2019. On the agenda so far, we have to appoint the 2019 Board Standing Committees, the 2019 CCC Annual Events Permit, and, as you heard from Mr. Brown, the second reading of Ordinance 18/19-01 for the CFD 2018-01. And then Item L-2 is your calendar for December and January. I do want to point out that there was an error regarding the location and meeting time for the Breka meeting, so I do apologize for that. The location is the Rancho Cordova Library, and the meetings start at 6:30, not 7:00. So that will be corrected next time.
All right. I guess we'll head off to Item M, Adjournment.
So I'd like to move that we adjourn to the next regular meeting of the Board of Directors of Cordova Recreation and Park District for Wednesday, January 16th at 6:30.
All those in favor? Do you have to do that? Good.
Thank you.
Oh, don't hit the gavel.